Okay, let's call a meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Here.
Counselor Geisler?
Here.
Counselor Jelly?
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Here.
Mayor Boucher?
Here.
Any announcements by counselors? Nothing for me. We have no public hearing. Communications are on file. Mr. Mulder, could you go over a short description of the presentations made at pre-agenda?
Sure. First, we went through a discussion about cameras in various public locations, specifically at the impound lot in, on Lightning Drive. We also looked at some camera placements in Fichtner Park. We talked about the possibility of extending that into the Hermantown marketplace in 2025. Under the trails update, excuse me, we looked at segment four, which is from Hermantown Road and the former Ingwall site south to King Creek Park. We talked about the status of the easements that we need there and the process of trying to obtain those. And then finally, the work plan, I went through a list of a number of projects that we're working on in 2025 in anticipation of having a work session next week, Monday, at 4:30 to talk about council priorities and goals for the next two to four years.
Thank you. Next is public discussion. This is the time that individuals can address council about items not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. There will be time for public discussion under the agenda items relating to that specific purpose. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council? If so, please step forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Keith Harris, H-A-R-R-I-E-S. I live at 5632 West Arrowhead Road. And I'm here this evening to get some answers. I paid my stormwater fee, and I'd like to know why it keeps going up, direction it's going. And that's first started out, I don't have city water, don't have city sewer. The first time I received this fee was, it was forty-two dollars. It went up to forty-nine. This time around, it was forty-nine, sixty-eight. Looking closer at the bill, next time around, it's going to be fifty-one, forty-two. So my question to the council, and for people that are way smarter than me, is how is this based? Is this based on the volume of water, i.e. the snowfall, the rain that goes? I've told at one time that this was based because I don't pay into a city water, per se. But it's to help with culprit replacement, things like that. I'm just looking for some direction. Is it based on volume? I mean, the last couple of years, this isn't like the winter of 1991 where we had all the snow dumped on us. And yes, there's more water in the ditches and things like that. Can you explain to me, a layman, why it keeps going up? And I know you probably can't give me an answer now, today, but it's something for you to look at.
I focus as much as I can to cover the points that matter in this. The stormwater utility fee is meant to cover the city's costs of maintaining our stormwater system throughout the city. It's called a utility because we are allowed by state law to build individual property owners for that. The way that we have chosen to do that is by billing a stormwater fee versus putting it on people's property taxes and having everyone pay based on value. On the stormwater fee, it's based on a concept called the equivalent residential unit. We've designated ninety-one hundred square feet as the average home equivalent residential unit. So each house pays one ERU. If a business has ten times that or ninety-one hundred square feet, they pay ten ERUs. And this more fairly assesses the cost of stormwater maintenance to the entities that create it. So what it's based on is the amount of impervious surface that businesses and residents have. We can find out how much impervious surface the businesses have just from the air, from photographs. But we can't photograph each house and we can't calculate each one. So we came up with a number that each home, like yours, has, and that's ninety-one hundred square feet. That was kind of an average. City of Duluth uses a lower number of like twenty, twenty-eight hundred square feet. And the reason it keeps going up is it's based on our cost to maintain this system. We have to maintain the culverts. We have to maintain the water flows through the city. And if we don't do that, then the state takes away our right to issue building permits, ultimately. So we tried to come up with the most fair way of covering this cost where a business that has a lot of impervious surface, even though the value is lower compared to a house, it's paid in the residential unit versus the dollar value of the property. Can anyone else? Joe, can you step in and add anything to what I've?
That's, you've kind of covered kind of my expertise unless Mr. Mulder has anything to add.
Well, as I say, again, the fee was originally set back in 2017 at five dollars. At that point in time, that was, we looked at what it was going to cost us to maintain the stormwater utility. And the five dollars per ERU was set, excuse me, it was seven. We initially proposed five after the, we had a task force of businesses and residents. We talked about this and it was initially set up at seven, and we said we would not increase it for five years. And then after five years, we would hold a public hearing to increase it. So then it was increased a slight percentage the past two years to maintain, you know, the revenue to cover the cost of the utility.
And this first started in nineteen, or seventeen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're expecting our fourth increase on this? What, forty-two, forty-nine, forty-nine, sixty-eight? Now it's going to go up again this next round to fifty-one, forty-two.
Yeah, so again.
Is that, is that a half bill or?
I'd have to look at that closer because it's like, because I know that we, you get, you get the bill every six months.
Correct.
And it shouldn't, it should increase as of January one of twenty-five, but I don't think it's scheduled to increase again. It's not scheduled to increase again, so I'd have to look at that.
You might be looking at December or last, the last half of last year over the first half of next year.
I can't tell off the top of my head without looking at it.
Well, this is according to your city ordinance 2024-09 is where their city council approved the increase to fifty-one.
Was it the change of the fee schedule?
Forty-two.
That, that's our fee schedule ordinance. So all the fees are under one ordinance. So when we approve that every year, if you'd like to stick around, we can try and go over this at the end of the meeting if you'd like.
I was just wondering if it was based on water volume, i.e. no.
It's not. No. It's a flat dollar amount.
Okay.
For residents.
And that's everyone that doesn't have, in my case, city waters.
No, even the half city water, they pay the same thing.
Every parcel that it has an improvement on it pays a flat dollar amount. Unless you're a commercial property, then you pay that rate times the number of ERUs. So again, if Fleet Farm has a hundred ERUs and you have one, they pay a hundred times more.
Okay.
And they do have the ability to get discounts for treating their stormwater, but they, they pay that same equivalent per ERU that they have.
Okay.
And, and the difference between people that don't have public utilities like sewer and water, the ones that do pay it on their water bill and sewer bill every month versus every six months, like those that don't have it.
Right, okay. All right. Thank you. That's why I'm here, to get some questions answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public discussion at this time? Joe, anyone online? Last opportunity for public discussion. If anyone has any public discussion, please start with your name and address. Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes a minutes approval or correction of January sixth, 2025, city council continuation minutes, counts payable, approval of general city warrants from January first, 2025 through January fifteenth, 2025, in the amount of five hundred eight thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty cents. An appointment of the following for a three-year term to the park board, Dwight Wickstrom, to the utility commission, Bill Berg, and Doug Kerfeld. Is this, Mr. Mulder, is that the end of the consent agenda?
It is.
Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next, we have a second reading of ordinance 2025-01, an ordinance amending chapter three of the Hermantown Code of Ordinances by amending section three-ten and repealing section three-ten A to continue to administer and regulate the public rights of way in the public interest and provide for the issuance of regulation of the right-of-way permits. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, could you give us an explanation of this?
The purpose of the right-of-way ordinance is to regulate what's going on in the right-of-way by various contractors. And the idea here is for the city to communicate to those contractors what would be expected when they do work in the right-of-way so that that, what they are putting in the right-of-way doesn't interfere with the city and county's use of that right-of-way. And then also to communicate for them back to us in terms of knowing exactly what is happening there and so that we have a record of the improvements they've made in our right-of-way.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from counselors? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on this ordinance? If anyone wishes to comment, please start with their name and address. Anyone online yet, Joe? Any public comment on ordinance 2025-01? Last opportunity for public comment on the ordinance amending chapter three of the Hermantown Code. Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is another second reading, ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance amending and restating 1060 erosion and sediment control for land disturbance activities and section 1080, control of post-construction stormwater runoff of the Hermantown City Code. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Peterson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
So this is an ordinance for 1060 is erodiment and sediment control for land disturbances and 1080 is post-construction stormwater runoff. Both of these ordinances are being updated to kind of on some technical stuff in order to keep consistent with the state's MS4 permit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by council? Is there any public input on this ordinance?
Hey, Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this going to affect any projects we currently have in the works?
Shouldn't.
Like Peyton Acres, it won't have any effect on that. They're developing.
Well, Mayor and Council, the question is, does the, this updated ordinance affect any of the active projects? So the ones that have, we've issued a MS4 statement of compliance, it will not affect because that's under the old ordinance and old permit, but anything moving forward? So the phases of Peyton Acres, for example, that are not permitted at this point will fall under the new ordinance and the new MS4 from the MPDS.
Not having read it, so take it with a grain of salt, but is this going to add a substantial amount of work for our contractors?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Again, any public input on this ordinance? Does anyone wish to comment on the second reading of ordinance 2025-02? Any public comment on the ordinance amending section 1060 and section 1080? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is the first reading of ordinance 2025-03. There will be a time for public comment, but there will be no vote on this ordinance this evening. That'll take place at our next meeting. 2025-03, an ordinance amending Hermantown Code of Ordinances by adding a new section, 280 Housing Trust Fund. Do we have a motion? Oh, wait. Do we have an explanation? Sorry about that.
So the purpose of this ordinance is to create a special fund that, for the city where we would put the money that we get from the state of Minnesota for housing to kind of help assist in any housing development. Chad Runcetti, economic development director, could speak more to that if you would like more information.
Chad, feel free to approach the podium.
President Boucher, the counselors, I realize I'm supposed to be at the bench. Apologies for that. But yes, this is the creation of a trust fund put into, the ability to do so put into statute in 2017 by the state of Minnesota. This is intended to create flexibility when wanting to support housing projects at the local level to, to help address any gaps in, in housing projects, excuse me, as well as potentially buying down mortgages and those types of things. It's important to note that, that in the creation of this trust fund, there are not automatically affordability requirements with any money spent out of this fund or allocated to this fund. However, state dollars that are deposited or, or used to, to capitalize this fund may and do so have some strings attached to them. The initial deposit and resolution that is attached to this ordinance places the state affordable housing aid, which has been provided to the city from the state under some legislation passed in 2021. And so, sorry, in 2023. And so that money will have some affordability requirements tied to it when deployed from the fund. And I'll stand for any questions if there are any.
Any questions from council? I had one. This is entirely external money and no general fund money?
The resolution that allocates funding to, that's associated with this trust fund is external money. It's money from the state. If and when the council approves any grant applications, there will be local matches required with that. So there would be local funding. It's also, this fund provides the opportunity for the city to put money into the fund to be using, used specifically for housing projects. But at this time, no, no dollars from the city specifically.
Thank you. Anything from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Any public comment on the first reading of ordinance 2025-03? Any public comment on an ordinance amending the Hermantown Code of Ordinances by adding section 280 Housing Trust Fund? Hearing none, we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution 2025-10, resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
This is an annual resolution we do so that when we issue bonds for projects, to the extent that we've extended, expended any money prior to the issuance of those bonds from the general fund, we could pay the general fund back with the proceeds from the bond. So we are required to do that every year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2025-10? Is there any public input on the resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code? Hearing none, I'd ask for roll call.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2025-11, resolution authorizing and directing the distribution of the pay equity study to the state of Minnesota for the city of Hermantown. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder?
Every three years, the city is required to provide a pay equity report to the state of Minnesota. The pay equity report simply looks at the points and classifications of each position and then the salary ranges for those to make sure that we don't have any issues of male or female classes being underpaid relative to their points. So every three years, we take a look at that. We use the city's classification system, which is recognized by the state, and we submit that report.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
What classifies a job as male versus female? I see we have fourteen job classes under male and nine under female.
It depends upon, we have a lot of positions that are what we call single incumbents. So only one position is holding that spot, and it depends on which gender is holding that spot. So if the city administrator was a female, then that would be a city administrator, a female class. So that's how they determine that. And then if there are a classification, like police officers, where there's male and female, it's called a balanced class.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question. Do we get a response from the state then that they've received it and were in compliance or do?
Yeah, so we'll get a, so we'll submit the report later this week. They'll then send a letter saying that you, whether you're in compliance or not. Based upon my review of the compliance report and interpretation of it, we should be in compliance.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2025-11? Any public input on the authorization of the distribution of the pay equity study to the state of Minnesota? Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2025-12, resolution approving tentative agreement and authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver agreement with law enforcement labor services local 47, LALS, for the period of January first, 2025 through December 31st, 2027. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
So the city met with the union two different times to talk about the expiring contract and how to proceed going forward. We reached a tentative agreement that's in front of you, a number of changes, and provide a wage increase each of the three years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input or comment on resolution 2025-12? Last opportunity for public input or comment on the resolution approving a tentative agreement between the city and law enforcement labor services local number forty-seven. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2025-13, resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver master services agreement for professional services with Braun InterTech Corporation and Engineering Partners Incorporated. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Peterson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder, could you explain this resolution?
Sure. Since 2017, we've had a master service agreement for both geotechnical evaluations and for material testing on our various projects. We have those both with Braun and Engineering Partners. So then as we have a need for either one of those services, we go and get quotes from these two providers, and then we have a contract in place, and then we award that based upon the low quote for that specific project.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council on this resolution? Hearing none, are, is there any public input or comments on resolution 2025-13? Any public input on the resolution authorizing the agreement with Braun, InterTech, and Engineering Partners? Any public input or comment on resolution 2025-13? Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2025-14, resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver naming rights agreement for Fichtner Park. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, could we get an explanation?
Sure. We have a, reached an agreement with Centricity to have their name put on the baseball fields at Fichtner Park. And so this is the result of that work, and we're happy with the partnership that we have with Centricity. So we're recommending this agreement with you.
And this includes a donation amount?
Donation of a half a million dollars.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I guess just thank city staff and, and Joe for executing this and working diligently to get this accomplished. So, thank you.
Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this resolution?
I guess I would like to mention I am on the board at Centricity Credit Union, so I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you. Any public input on resolution 2025-14? Any public input on the resolution approving a naming rights agreement for Fichtner Park with Centricity Credit Union? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-15, resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver purchase agreement for pitching mound and mats purchases for Fichtner Park from Portolite Pitching Mounds. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Peterson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
So this is some of the equipment that we wanted to make sure that we ordered in time for delivery by first of April. This provides for pitching mound and various equipment for the baseball fields.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input or comment on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2025-15? Any public input on the resolution authorizing the purchase of pitching mounds and mats for Fichtner Park? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash sixteen. Resolution approving pay request number eight for Fichtner Park Improvements to Caskey Incorporated in the amount of forty-three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-one cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, you'll be okay?
Sure. This is for the work that's done in the last month at Fichtner Park.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash sixteen? Do we have any public input or comment on the resolution approving pay request number eight for Fichtner Park Improvements to Caskey Incorporated? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash seventeen. Resolution approving change orders number one, bridge improvement district number five forty-two for Northland Constructors in the amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jelly. Mr. Mulder, would you like our city engineer to address this?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is change order number one associated with the new bridge we built on Herman Town Road. These, there are seven items included in change order one, and they are all decreased quantities. In the field, we found less bedrock in the creek bottom, and thus the the rock removal and the structural concrete and associated work items all were reduced because of that. So this change order is reflective of those reduced items for a total savings of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
So this change order is a total reduction?
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash seventeen? Is there any public input on resolution approving change order number one for bridge improvement district number five forty-two in the decreased amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents? Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Only four to go.
Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash eighteen. Resolution approving change orders number two and three, road improvement district number five forty-one to Northland, Northland Constructors in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counsel Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Counsel Peterson. Mr. Ball?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. And this is a change, a change orders two and three to Northland Constructors for the work associated with the project A, which is the Herman Town Road Reconstruction Project. Change order two is specific to the areas that we had muck excavation. When we got into the actual work, the muck areas were significantly less than what we had prepared in our plan. So there's a number of items that decreased in that total amount was a savings to the city of two hundred and seventy-one thousand and some odd dollars. And then change order three is what we call a compensating change order, and that brings all the estimated quantities up to the completed quantity value. So that's a composite of items that both increased and decreased, and the net result of that change order summary was a savings of sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents to the city. So the total contract reduction for change orders two and three are three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash eighteen? Any public input on the resolution approving change orders number two and three for road improvement district number five forty-one in the reduced amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is two thousand twenty-five dash nineteen. Resolution approving pay request number seven for road improvement district number five forty-one and five forty-two to Northland Constructors in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Counsel Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Counsel Peterson, Mr. Ball?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this resolution captures the payment for the the previous two resolutions for change orders associated with the Herman Tone Road Project. So this is for pay application number seven, which has broken down to project A and B. Project A is for the roadway, and there's just over three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that Northern Constructors is due for work that was completed in October and November of twenty-four. And we are still going to withhold five percent retainage of just over a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And the the question was asked earlier, does that, there's still work to be done? And this, in my opinion, more than covers the value of work that remains to be done. And then in project B, the bridge project, this pay application of eighty-six thousand dollars will be a final for that. We are releasing the five percent retainage. All work under that project has been complete, reviewed, and approved by our consulting engineer, LHB, for that project.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I think.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Yeah, one of the residents, I think, talked about the, what's the best way to phrase this, where the road meets the bridge? I don't remember what direction it was, that there was a lip or a bump or something there. Was that, so that bridge has been inspected and everything, and we deem that it wasn't enough of a bump there to warrant rework?
I, excuse me, I remember that being asked late fall, and I talked to Public Works Director, and I talked to our consulting engineer. They looked at it, and they felt it was within the 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 parameters that were spelled out in the plan. We, we have a warranty period on this project. So once we accept the contract in whole, which I expect to be in in June of twenty-five, we will have a warranty walkthrough. And if there's an an issue that we feel is unacceptable or unsafe, we will certainly address it at that time.
We'll see how it lasts the winter then.
So it was within the acceptable bump limits?
Well.
And tolerance is maybe the.
Right.
We don't know what has happened, happened to it in the last week.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a follow-up question as well. So then substantial or final completion in June or so, and then we would get the next payment application at that time, correct?
Correct.
And then just one more follow-up, I think, Mr. Mulder, probably. We kind of paused the assessment process with this last year, last fall. When do you foresee that going forward again?
I would envision that we would make sure that all the work is completed, and then we would go through that process.
Summer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nineteen? Any public input on the resolution approving pay request number seven to Northland Constructors? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty. Resolution authorizing the city of Herman Town to support St. Louis County for county-state aid Highway six Maple Grove Road project. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counsel Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. I've been told that this is a county project on Maple Grove Road west of Midway Road that does not include any Herman Town City roads.
Correct.
Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty? Is there any public input on the resolution supporting St. Louis County for their county-state aid Highway number six Maple Grove Road project? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
And a late addition, resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-one, a resi- resolution designated, designating Saturday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as Dave Huddle Day in Herman Town. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. This is to recognize Dave Huddle's contributions to the community and his retirement as arena manager next Saturday. Are any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-one? Last opportunity for public input on the resolution designated Saturday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as Dave Huddle Day in Herman Town. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. And now the moment you've all been waiting for with no closed session, is there a motion to recess?
Move to recess?
Motion by Counsel LeBlanc to recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I think Counsel Peterson got it in first. Nobody wants to stay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.